Is he ready? Can I call to order the regular Wednesday, May 25th meeting of the Planning Commission? Can we have roll call, please? Chair Quilty?
Here.
Chair Andre?
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt?
Here.
Commissioner Gross?
Here.
Commissioner Lo?
Here.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Sofficannick?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll open up oral communications. If anybody would like to come up and speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please step up and sign in. Okay, seeing nobody signing in, we'll move on to the consent calendar, Boards, Commissions, and Committees' Policy Handbook.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hello.
Hello. As you're aware, the City Council adopted newly advised ordinances for all the Commissions to streamline them and make sure that everyone had the same rules and orders and regulations. They did that back in November, and we emailed that out to you. This policy handbook is just more of a user-friendly guide for you. It includes all the information in the ordinances. It briefly references some of the legislative information that you have to abide by, like Robert's Rules of Orders. It is not all-inclusive, it's just a quick guideline, so if you ever have questions, always feel free to call us. There is just a couple of items that I wanted to highlight for you, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The recruitment and appointment process is going to stay the same. When your term is up, you can reapply, or we'll have the new applicants. Applicants will still interview in front of the City Council and be appointed, and so it'll remain the same process. The attendance and removal, that's always been in the code, it's just never been enforced, so we're gonna start tracking that a little more closely to make sure that our Commissioners are involved and that they still want to be on the Committee or on the Commission. So if you have three absences in a row, or you miss a third of the regularly scheduled meetings for the year, then the Chair will notify me and the seat will be vacated. At the, if the Chair, if you know you're going to be absent, just let the Chair know ahead of time, and he can state it for the minutes, and that won't count against your absences. The handbook also briefly outlines your roles, your roles with each other, your roles with staff, your roles with the Council. You are an Advisory Committee. As the Planning Commission, you do have a little more powers by the government code. And then, the last item doesn't apply to you guys a little bit. Most of your items are staff-driven and city-driven, but if there's an item that you'd like to see on the agenda, you just need to bring it up in a meeting like this, and then a majority of the people, the Commissioners here, need to agree that they want to discuss that item. Don't state your position, whether you're in favor or opposed to it, you just need that you would like further discussion on the item, and staff will schedule it for a future meeting. And with that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
We're good.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing. Item A, Site Plan Review and Conditional Use Permit for the Marriott Fairfield Inn.
Okay. Chair Quilty and Planning Commissioners, tonight, Staff is presenting a request to develop a Fairfield Inn Hotel at 10650 Los Alamitos Boulevard on a 2.3-acre vacant parcel, which everyone tends to know. The applicant is here with us tonight, Shamir Narci from Triple Suns, and other folks are with him as well. He's bringing, he's brought environmental consultants, in case you have any questions, Greg Tonkovich, Megan Macias, and Gil Mendoza. So, the hotel is presented, includes a four-story building, 108 rooms, with a boardroom, two conference rooms, a breakfast service area, a gym, a small food market, and a pool. The proposed hotel would be a complement to this area, as you can guess. It'll bring tourists who would shop, spend money, dine, you know, in that area. There are shops around there that will have increased sales because of this. There are many benefits to the project, increased property tax, since it's a vacant lot now, this will definitely increase it, an increase in visitation tax, which used to be called TOT tax, it's now visitation tax, improvement of blighted, underutilized property, you've seen this has been overgrown many times, and the fence has fallen down. There will be new customers for the surrounding businesses, of course, construction jobs during the building phase, widening of Brighamin Street. That will make this street more straight with Sausalito on the other side, so they're dedicating 10 feet of the north side of the property up here, and that's Brighamin Drive there. The proposed hotel meets the city's development standards and findings. The project meets required parking ratio of one space per room. There's 108 rooms, so there's 108 spaces. Vehicle access will be located as far as possible from the intersections through three driveway cuts. There's one here on, or two here on Sausalito, and one on Brighamin, and none on Los Alamitos The site plan meets landscaping requirements in that 15%, more than 15% of the site is landscaped. There is 20 feet for each parking space, a 15-gallon tree for every five parking spaces, or 15 gallon or greater. The hotel is configured in such a way to both fit the site and to present an interesting view from Los Alamitos Boulevard. The proposed architectural style is a typical corporate franchise. The architectural features are, for instance, the sweeping design of the Port Cocher there, which is a hard thing to pronounce.
That's what you did at law.
Port Cocher. And the, there's a trellis-type structure that's up above the main tower there, that you see leaves shadows down below, kind of. And the flat planes are broken up to increase interest in the way it looks, and there's different colors, of course. It's interesting, I didn't know until a couple of days ago, based on their materials board that might be getting passed around. The black on these elevations is actually tile, and so a great percentage of this building will be covered in tile, so it won't go bad like paint does as much. There is painted stucco, though. There are two small pedestrian spaces at the corners of Sausalito in Los Alamitos and at Brighamin in Los Alamitos. They're small, they're stopping spots for people that walk by. They kind of draw people to walk through that area. An environmental analysis has found that the development complies with the requirements for infill, the infill exemption of SEQA. It's consistent with the land use and zoning, surrounded by development on all sides, less than five acres, not a habitat for endangered and/or sensitive species, will not result in significant noise, traffic, air quality, or water quality impacts, and it can be served by the existing public services and utilities. Although supportive of the overall project and excited to see this site developed with the hotel, Staff is concerned that the architecture may not address your previous concerns from the last hotel person that came and presented. And Staff also finds that the retention area, which is hard to see there in the parking lot, is problematic and might serve the property better if it were placed closer to Los Alamitos Boulevard, so that that could be usable space somewhat for pedestrians and stuff like that. It would now be appropriate for the Chair to open the public hearing and provide the applicant time to present, because he does have a presentation, and take public testimony after that. And finally, Staff does recommend that you adopt the attached resolutions of approval.
At this time, we'll open up the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up.
Thank you. We are excited to present and propose a development. Before we do, we wanted to commend and thank the Staff for putting everything together. You guys worked really hard to get to where we are now. So, without further ado, this is our proposed development. Tom Oliver just went through most of the site and the site plans. We're proposing to build a 108-room hotel, Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott at 10650 Los Alamitos Boulevard. The proposed, the proposed Fairfield Inn will operate as a Marriott franchise owned by Sukima Hospitality Group and managed by Triple Suns Investments. The management team at Triple Suns has over 40 years' experience in managing hotels. The intentions of the groups are to develop and manage and retain the property. So, before we get into any details, we wanted to just introduce Marriott, and I'm sure everyone's all familiar with Marriott, and I wanted to give some details regarding the Fairfield Inn and Suites, and what the brand is and what it represents. So Marriott is a global hospitality powerhouse. It's international, nationwide, and does well locally as well. The Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott is one of the 19 brands that are offered by Marriott internationally, so it's an industry leader in upper moderate-tier lodging and business leisure travel. We partnered with Fairfield Inn and Suites for a particular reason. Los Alamitos is friendly to business and attracts a lot of business, and we are proposing to build a business-class hotel, and this is exactly what Fairfield Inn and Suites With Fairfield Inn and Suites, we are harnessing the power that Marriott and its resources offers the community, and the ultimate bottom line, the reservation systems are unmatched in the industry, the reward systems is phenomenal, and, you know, it just has a powerful infrastructure. So, we bought into the system, and we'd like to show you guys, maybe you guys can help us buy into it as well. So, you know, it's been around for 25 years, this Fairfield Inn and Suites brand by Marriott. It has a proven track record, it delivers consistent and quality experience for the guests, and guests keep coming back, so it's for the business class traveler. So, let's move to the next slide. This is a little video, kind of goes through the feel of what it is to walk into a Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott. So that's the fourth-generation Fairfield by Marriott, Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott. There's over 700 in operation currently. And, you know, I wanted to talk a little bit more about Fairfield Inn and Suites, the brand, what it has to offer. You know, they live by the 100% Fairfield guarantee, and, you know, it just goes back to Marriott and what they do in the market. They lead the market, and they have a segment, a market segment, they study it, they understand it, and they create a product to match that demand. And being that I talked about the business-class hotel that this represents, one of the target audiences that, or the consumer that Fairfield Inn and Suites is attracting is the millennial class. And, you know, the millennial class, if not too many people are aware of what the millennial class is, they are the age brackets between 1980 and 2000. Currently, they represent one-third of the current money that's spent on the leisure market and hotel industry as a whole. The hotel industry is projecting about that number to rise to about 50% in 2020. So Fairfield Inn and Suites, Marriott, other brands have really studied hard and came up with the prototype, and this is one of the prototypes that they came up with, is this Generation Four here. So, yeah, so there's a few brands. I'm not sure if you guys have heard of, Best Western has created their own niche brand, it's called Vibe, and they're targeting the millennial class, and they have a basic hotel structure and marketing package just for that as well. Hilton has done the same. True is their product that they're introducing, and they introduced it this year. Along with a lot of other brands have been doing the same thing. So, what is the Fairfield Inn 100% Guarantee? This is another clip that we're gonna go onto, just that it'd be nice to share this with you guys.
I think some of the things that are important for Mr. T to learn here would be just an overall softening. Our Fairfield 100% Guarantee is all about making sure our guests have a great stay, and that starts right here, with a simple greeting to make them feel welcome. Give it a try.
Welcome to Fairfield Inn and Suites. What do you want, fool?
No, there are no fools at Fairfield. Try it again.
Sucker? Duffle bag? D-bag for short?
I don't think that's what that's short for. Mr. T has so far called guests Fool and Sucker, or Suckers if it's a group. Now, a big part of the guarantee is making sure that our guests have everything that they need. Up here comes someone.
Hey, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I lost my key.
Lost? I know what it is to lose. Back in 82, I was the heavyweight champion of the world. In a movie. Lost everything in that stupid rematch.
Sorry, what's your room number?
347.
347, great. Sometimes guests need something, and it's our job to help them. Pillows.
Someone want pillows? Open up! Want another pillow? I used to sleep with a cinder block under my head, just to make sure I didn't wake up too sore.
I mean, that was Mr. T delivering pillows, if I've ever seen it, so. So let's go get a vacuum, and then we're gonna talk about a whole lot of different things that just happened. He's not quite Employee of the Month yet, it's his first day. Now, another piece of the guarantee is to anticipate what a guest needs before they even have to ask. Do you see anyone here who might need some help? Thought he would really excel in the fitness realm, and he did.
Looks like he could use some water.
Oh, thanks.
And a towel.
Thank you.
Just a little too much.
Try running with 45 pounds of gold around your neck. It feels something like this.
Oh, no, 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 no. We were close, but it just wasn't clicking, it wasn't fitting, until breakfast. This is where we have our free breakfast. It's also a great place to connect with the guests, so get out there and connect with those guests.
Got it.
The breakfast bar, T, kinda surprised us, in a good way. He gave a man some hot sauce, hot sauce, hot sauce.
Brought you a little something to spice up those eggs.
Thank you.
I was just feeling you could use some hot sauce.
Yeah, I love hot sauce.
I connect with you.
And I, I connect with you, man. I am very proud, and I like that man very much, and it was nice to see him do what I knew that he could do.
I feel like a new man, and a new man needs a new name. So just call me Mr. Guarantee. First name Mister, middle name is that period, last name Guarantee.
Don't show him that, that I said that.
So that was just a little clip, it's more humorous than anything else, but it kinda gives you an idea of what the Fairfield Inn and Suites represents. It's over 25 years of collective infrastructure and branding, and, you know, they have noticed a shift in their product, and they decided to move in a certain direction with the millennial class, what the previous video indicated. So, some of the factors that are taken into account with this design are the millennial mindsets, that is, you know, millennials like smart technology, they want access to Wi-Fi, they want vibrant, open social spaces where they can communicate, they can conduct business, and as you saw in the video, previous, the previous video, it was a nice, open, as a guest enters into the property, there's abundant open spaces and internet connection options, and the millennials want all this at a certain price, at a price point. So, try to offer the best service with the best quality room, at the same time with the best experience, and given the best price. So, ultimately designed to appeal across generations, including but not limited to just the millennial class, Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott is designed truly, is a truly new look, and has a great feel, and we have bought into the system. So, we believe in Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott. The design and the contemporary model, it is proven and has been beta-tested. There's over 749 in the marketplace, as I mentioned, and, you know, about 283 in the pipeline. So, the model's successful, and it's, it works in a primary market, a secondary market, or a tertiary market. And, let's move on to the next slide. So, there's a local example of where this product has been built, and that's in the Tustin Market. We, we know that the market has given great reviews on the hotel itself, it has great curb appeal, and there's other locations that are being developed as we speak. The few are listed above, Rancho Cucamonga, El Segundo is in the final stages, Moore Park is gonna be breaking ground soon, and hopefully Los Alamitos. So, there's a lot of distinctions between what we're offering and what has been built by R.D. Olson at the Tustin location. Majority of the construction materials used at this hotel site is joint stucco control and some stone veneer. We have that added element of the, on the material boards indicates the porcelain tile. We have one darker shade and another Kensington, which is, emulates a wood look, a cherry, a cherry color. So, so Tom mentioned some of the amenities that will be offered by the transit guests that will be staying at the hotel. Like the Tustin property, we're also adopting the model of having more suites, because we want the business traveler or the millennial that walks, that resides on the property to have more spacious options. And again, we're catering this as a business-class hotel, so we're offering the meeting rooms, the boardrooms, and, you know, we wanted to have a sleek, new-age feel, so we added that porcelain tile going across the building. And another added element that we added was, we extended the pool to have an extra marketing package, and we're also adding a fire pit to the pool area. So, that's gonna be a nice marketing package for us. So, these are some of the interior building design, and this is one of the, one of the locations, so the smart, smart vibrant space for the, that millennial class and the business class hotel. This is another example here. Wanted to get into where the market is moving, and just touch back home about what we discussed regarding the development and where the market, the hotel market is going as far as brand-selecting a design to represent a brand. And these are all developments that are being contracted by R.D. Olson, and they have either under construction or have finished construction. Hyatt Place by Hyatt in Irvine, Spring Hill by Marriott in Burbank, that one is, I believe it's still under construction, and this is, this is the way the, these major brands are moving towards this type of architecture. And this is, this is as close to the finished product we can emulate, minus the porcelain tile that has a polish on it, this is basically what it can look like. Other areas, local areas like Glendale, there's postmodern architecture all over, Midrise Apartment, there's a luxury Midrise Apartment there in Glendale as well, two of them. Another property by Hilton, being developed in Colorado Boulevard, that is also a postmodern, contemporary design. They wanna capture all the millennial business going forward. That 2020 number is something that everyone's stressing. So, it's, this one will be done by the end of the year. It's an abnormal lot, but it's, it's, they got it on there. This is the most local design, and it's a product by Marriott, the Spring Hill. This is off Edinger Boulevard in Huntington Beach, right next to Bellatera. This is about another six, seven months out, but it's also emulating a modern design and contemporary design. So, and these are all the designs that the Generation Four Marriott contemporary design that are going around nationwide. So, there's recent developments in Anaheim as well, you know, some of these are by R.D. Olson, some of them are by other developers, but the major, the major ones that have been constructed are the Courtyard by Marriott in Anaheim. But, uh, the major, the major ones, um, that have been constructed are the Courtyard by Marriott, um, in Anaheim. Uh, more of a Spanish style. Um, the bottom is a Spring Hills, more of a contemporary design. Um, if anyone has visited that site, uh, they, uh, would notice that, that's some of the same cladding that we're proposing here, uh, European influence. Um, and it looks really, really clean once it's put up. Um, and the Holiday Inn Express is right next to the, the Courtyard by Marriott in Anaheim. And this Country Inn and Suites is, is, uh, it's a rendering and, um, this is, uh, in, in the process. The R.D. Olson is still constructing that product. Um, as I mentioned before, um, True by Hilton, they're, they're catering, um, they're moving their product, uh, in that direction. Uh, Vibe by Best Western. And these are all the other major brands that are im- im- emulating the same concept and the same modern architecture and design. So, um, I wanted to end it with this video here.
Hello, how may I help you?
Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
Hello.
This was actually recorded at the Tustin property.
Welcome to Fairfield Inn and Suites. How may I help you? You look surprised.
Hi.
Mr. T. Yes, sir. Mr. Guarantee. You wondering? You surprising, see me? What are you doing here? I'm gonna take care of you, don't worry. See that sign right there? Mr. Guarantee. And I'm here to enforce the Fairfield a hundred percent guarantee. Uh, I know you can't believe we started with high five. There you go, get a brother scared, don't leave me hanging, yeah, man?
This is so cool.
Yes, yes, not only is it cool, it's guaranteed. Uh, how you feel? People won't believe this, huh? Hey, look at that muscle, yeah. Put the goat change on. High five, brother. So, man, I'm Mr. Guarantee. Definitely, man, you've been hanging out with me.
So, that's, that's, um, the Fairfield Guarantee and that's the end of my presentation. Um, I wanted to open up the forum to any questions that staff might have, any of the commissioners or any of the general public.
Do you have a franchise agreement with Marriott at this time?
Uh, we have been in, uh, constant communication with Marriott and, um, we have, uh, not signed a commitment yet, but, uh, we are, um, engaged actively. Soon as we get approval, um, we will engage in that contract.
So you brought this project forward as a, as a Marriott Fairfield, but you in fact don't have a franchise with Marriott at this time?
Uh, typically how, uh, franchises agreements work is once, once we get a approval, um, on a project, we, uh, entertain the actual agreement and the fees and all the training and everything included in that.
So we would not have any idea what the terms and conditions of that franchise agreement are at this time? Cause you don't know, so we wouldn't know.
Uh, the, the terms, the terms of the franchise agreement are laid out clear. Um, we have a copy of that, I can get that to you at the end of...
Well, I think that's, uh, that's important for us to know what those terms are. That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment if anybody would like to come up and speak.
Afternoon, I'm Stan Blackwell. Um, should I sign this?
Please.
I, I can't, I like the way that the, the presentation, I like the way it looked and everything, but I'm a bit concerned because previously we had, um, another person that wanted to do the same thing this gentleman wants to do. Um, and again, he had no franchise with Marriott and it seemed to be a bit vague as to whether they're going to be, um, uh, promoting this industry. So my concern is that if he doesn't have, um, anything firm that he can actually come in to the table with, then everything is pretty much up in the air and, and allowing him to begin without having any, um, substantiation of Marriott's involvement with him, I think would be a little bit ill-advised.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Ivler. Um, first, I'd like, I'd like to thank the city, they did a great job. Um, I have a little bit of a concern. They have one parking space per room. We have a fairly major issue in the city with parking, particularly in that area. Um, I assume that their employees are not going to be walking to the hotel. I have a concern that our one-space-per-room policy doesn't include the fact that they'll have, assuming a full staff, including people and other things, ten, twelve employees on premises at any one time with, uh, no parking for their employees, which, in that particular area of our city is a bit of a problem as we know since we're dealing with the parking issues, uh, the traffic commission. So I have a concern that the parking has been under, um, used for that area. Although I'm sure a hundred and ten additional parking spaces will make their neighbors very happy, um, during the day when their neighbors will be using their parking lot. But I have a concern about the employee parking and not providing enough employee parking for a full hotel with employees living there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm John Aklevia with the, uh, Los Alamos Unified School District, Director for Facilities Maintenance, Operations and Facilitation. Just wanna bring to light that, um, on Brigham and Drive, that's already a narrow street. And as the gentleman just came before me, that if there's additional parking that is allowed onto that street, that, that we may be creating line-of-sight issues on the already narrow street. And that we already have truck traffic on that street, uh, in the form of granola lumber. Uh, the post office who brings big semi-trucks early as five o'clock in the morning. Uh, the, um, Grading Pacific Company brings trucks in in all hours of the, the morning, the evening, the night hours. And, um, that could potentially be a noise issue for the developer and their, their clients as well. Our buses, uh, returning from field trips could be returning as late as ten o'clock at night. And so I just don't want that, uh, this development is, um, allowed to proceed and then we have issues with the clients and owners with regards to truck traffic and noise on that street in the late evening. Uh, as well, our sc- high school scholars walk through and from school along that stretch pedestrian sidewalk. And so I just wanna make sure that in any of this development, that, uh, pedestrians are kept in mind and that the, uh, safe passage, you know, uh, safe out of schools is kept in mind. Uh, and then like, uh, as well, the last project that was proposed on this, uh, project site included storefronts along Los Alamos Boulevard. And so what I, um, wanting to request is that if this project, um, includes any type of storefront or facilities interior of the building, that, um, those storefront, um, um, businesses don't have included in it any alcohol or tobacco outlets. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Macias. I'm a consultant to the applicant. I'm with Transpo Group, we prepared the traffic analysis. Um, Mr. Oliver asked me to note at this time that we do have one requested change in the conditions of approval. It's on condition sixty-seven. And the condition notes, um, the trip generation of the project, but it's based upon a previously proposed, um, hotel that was a hundred-and-eleven rooms rather than the currently proposed a hundred-and-eight rooms. So the trip generation should be changed to note that it's eight-hundred-and-eighty-two daily trips, fifty-eight AM peak hour trips and sixty-five PM peak hour trips. And I believe that that condition is the, um, uh, the calculation of the traffic impact fee. So we wanna make sure that the, the latest, uh...
Which, which, sorry, which condition?
I believe it's condition sixty-seven.
I think it's seventy-three.
Yeah. Okay, I just had a, kind of a screenshot on it that I, that they sent me on an email yesterday, so, um, like I said, it notes a hundred-and-eleven-room hotel, which is incorrect, so we ask that that would be corrected, um, in the final conditions.
Where do you see the hundred?
It's not seventy. I don't see any of that.
It's in the, the paragraph?
On seventy-three? So how many?
Yeah, it's seventy, it's seventy-three.
Hundred-and-eight rooms.
So how many net new daily trips AM and PM?
It should be eight-hundred-and-eighty-two net new daily, fifty-eight AM and sixty-five PM.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before you leave, yeah? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, you're the traffic consultant?
Yes.
Um, predominant access and ingress to this project is gonna be on Serpentine, correct? Was there any, uh, indication or was there any study or any, uh, discussion about putting a, a traffic control light on Serpentine, Los Alamos Boulevard to address the additional eight-hundred-and-eighty-two, um, trips?
No, uh, we evaluated the intersection, but it was found that it operates acceptably and within the city standards without the traffic signal. So we, it doesn't require it in terms of the operation of the intersection.
Did your study break down the trips, the eight-hundred-and-eighty-two trips as, as to how many would proceed, exit Serpentine and go north as opposed to how many would exit Serpentine and go south? Which would require them to cross the northbound lane, lanes?
We did. It would have been taken into account in the project trip distribution. Um, and if you'd like, I can tell you what that breakdown was, I just need a minute to find the, to find it in the traffic study. Um, but I do have, um, I'm, I'm looking at right now, what I do have up here is the, um, the analysis that we did of that intersection. And we analyze, unsignalize intersections looking only at the, um, the stop-controlled direction because most of the traffic on Los Alamos Boulevard is not gonna experience any delay. So only in the stop-controlled direction it operates at level of service D, um, in the worst-case scenario. And that's in the westbound direction. Um, that's the stop-controlled.
My concern is people, uh, vehicles exiting Serpentine wanting to proceed southbound on Los Al would have to, without the benefit of a signal, cross over the northbound lane, two northbound lanes.
So, um, you're saying those going southbound?
Yes, if you exit Serpentine, yes.
Okay. Um, we had in, in our trip distribution that twenty percent of the traffic was, um, destined southbound. Actually, that's incorrect, I'm sorry. Um, from the site, it would be sixty-five percent total making a left turn and going southbound. Um, and then the remaining thirty-five percent going northbound. And so that, that is accounted for in the analysis of the left turn out of Serpentine. Some of those trips, of course, are assumed to go, um, out of, uh, Brigham and as well. So they don't all turn left out of Serpentine, but that, that, that does account for the left turns out of the, out of the project.
So the ones going out of Brigham and going southbound would eventually cross over the traffic coming out of Serpentine going southbound. So sixty-five percent of the traffic coming out of this project would have to cross over the northbound lanes without the benefit of a signal.
That's correct. And the analysis that we did in the traffic study accounted for a larger project than what's in front of you tonight because the original traffic analysis included not only the hundred-and-eleven rooms, but a drive-through, um, coffee shop as well. And that's been removed from the project description. So I can't tell you what the result is because we took a look at it and said, well, we're, we're generating quite a bit fewer trips and we didn't have any impacts based on the city's threshold in the original study, so therefore we won't have any impacts with the project description now. So what I can tell you is the worst case, it would be level of service D.
Okay, thank you. And while I have you here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand my question.
Okay.
So, I didn't think about this before, but so some of the traffic did not go westbound to Los Al would proceed on Serpentine eastbound and to the intersection of Reagan Street, which is a, did your survey account for that?
We didn't account for that and generally, and the reason why is because, you know, generally visitor traffic is probably going to be traveling on the most major streets. Um, so we have everybody leaving the site onto Los Alamos Boulevard, either using Serpentine or Brigham.
Okay, because the, the area over on Reagan Street has been rezoned to accommodate things like kidnastics and other sport-related, heavily pedestrian-involved, uh, uses. So, uh, it might have been prudent to look at that in the event that people would be traveling that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Art?
Yeah, just, just say, just a couple of questions. Uh, at what time of the day do you estimate to be the peak, uh, let's say, leaving the site? Uh, between one hours for your...
I can find that out for you. Um, what I can tell you is that we did analyze the peak commute hours, the seven to nine in, in the morning and four to six in the evening, because that's the highest traffic, obviously, on the adjacent streets. Um, in terms of the hotel, I don't know if it's the, if it's the same, if it corresponds with the peak commute hours, but, you know, in general, um, when we prepare a traffic study, we always look at the peak commute hours because generally, um, the project itself is not gonna gen- generate enough traffic off-peak even when the project is at the peak than it would ever create as much traffic as, you know, the adjacent land uses would.
And one other question. I, staff either made, somebody made the comment about access to the site and they, I think they mentioned Los Alamos Boulevard. Is there a...
No, there's not.
There's no proposed driveway on Los Al Boulevard.
No proposed.
Correct.
All right, fine. Um, and then this might be more for staff, but there's, uh, talk of, not talk, there, there... We're proposing to, uh, put raised medians along the Boulevard. Is there gonna be a cut there for Serpentine?
Um, we're having our first open house on that item, you know, on the sixth and, um, that will help us determine where the center medians actually are.
We've got a lot of businesses along there that need, need access.
That's why we're having the open house.
So, so you're, you're, we're... So if you don't have, if you're not able to turn left onto Serpentine, does that throw a wrench into your, uh, how does that affect your project?
If you're not able to turn left onto Serpentine...
Out of Serpentine.
Or out of...
Off, off of Serpentine.
Yes, onto Los Alamos Boulevard, then, then obviously traffic would turn right and, and possibly make a U-turn, perhaps at Cerritos.
Or go to Brigham and...
Brigham and.
I mean, if I, if I was visiting from out of town and didn't know the thing, I would go to the light.
Right.
You know, rather than try to cross Serpentine. I mean, I cross Serpentine all the time coming from kidnastics, so...
Okay, I'm just trying to. Okay, all right. That's all for now.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just have a question for the applicant. Um, in the slide presentation, you, you had several different, um, what appeared possibly, maybe I read it incorrectly, that's why I'm asking. There was the fourth-generation design?
Correct.
And it looked like there were maybe three or four different fourth-generation designs? One of them being a Spanish style? Yeah, but I don't, did I read that right or was that, was that a previous design?
No, the, that was for emphasis of, um, showing the commissioners where the market is going as far as hotel design. Um, that was one of the projects that was developed by R.D.
That was one of the projects that was developed by R.D. Olson in Anaheim. And that was a different brand. It was a courtyard.
Yeah, it was a courtyard, right.
So it's not a fourth-generation Marriott.
So that's a design that they're using specifically for a courtyard and not necessarily a different brand?
That, that, that design is atypical of courtyards model as well. That design has been in place primarily because it's in a primary market. It's in the Disneyland destination resort feel. And that's what the hotel itself gives, that kind of vibe. And if you notice, there was balconies there as well.
Right.
And those balconies were like a marketing package that developer put in place to have a marketing advantage compared to other hotels.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to get some clarified for the school district really quick. I know, wasn't it ten feet? We're widening out the street, so it shouldn't impact their flow.
Well, the development requires the developer to widen Brighamin by ten feet.
Yes.
And install curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. So any current condition will be remedied by the widened Brighamin. Now, when you get up to almost Reagan, you have that industrial condominium part. Now, they have a deposit with us since they built that for us to widen that when this came online. So all the way up to Reagan will be widened, subject to this problem, if this gets approved. So that'll remedy Reagan and bring, I'm sorry, that'll remedy Brighamin from Reagan to Los Al Alamos Boulevard to meet the goals of the general plan, and also lines up the intersection at Los Al Boulevard across the street.
Right.
To where Brighamin turns into Sausalito. So that's one of the requirements of the developer. The taxpayers are not on the bill for that.
Was there anything else that the school district was concerned about?
Yeah, John had mentioned alcohol. There is no alcohol permit requested or CUP requested for alcohol on this. And he also had concerns regarding retail storefronts. There are no retail storefronts on this, except for a snack shop inside the hotel.
Traffic also was brought up.
Noise.
One of the students traveling to and from along Los Alamos Boulevard.
And the Los Alamos Boulevard frontages, Art alluded to, isn't changing. You have no driveway cutouts now. You won't have any driveway cutouts in the future.
You just have Serpentine now with potentially a lot more traffic turning out of it without a signal. So now you have kids crossing potentially without...
Actually, I think they're going to be getting out in the new hotel parking lot.
Yeah.
More than likely. Well, the ones that are walking, though. You still have students walking.
Not too many of them. Preston and I drive there every morning.
Me, too.
The flower shop will say, "Thank you."
They're closing.
Was that, does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Just one last issue with regards to the truck traffic that comes through there in the wee hours in the morning, in that if we have a hotel here with clients expecting to get rest and sleep, that we have Gonal lumber, we have the lumberyard just to the north of this facility, we have Grading Pacific, that all take trucks. And I know for a fact that they have trucks that come in the wee hours of the night, they park on our driveway, because the businesses aren't open yet. And so those trucks will be coming through at these late hours, and I just wouldn't want that, you know, we have complaints coming from the clients through the owners, that hey, these trucks that were already in this zone that were allowed are now interfering with their business. And like I said, too, our buses, you know, they're not necessarily noisy, but in the wee hours of the night, at ten o'clock, you know, they may be coming back from a field trip, and they'll be coming down Brighamin Drive. And so the same issue would happen if they're coming down, and you have a client that's expecting to get some rest for an early morning six o'clock meeting or so. So I wanted to bring that up, so that in their design, that they mitigate that potential, because they are in an industrial area.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
If we go back to where we originally had a proposal for a residential project here, if you remember, there was a lot of those concerns that were mentioned in developing a permanent residential project there. But with a hotel guest and the fact that the building is developed on the diagonal, so isn't parallel with the street, and the noise isn't going to travel straight up on the street, you've got a problem that could be managed by the front desk manager. You don't have someone in a permanent condo or a permanent apartment that is renting that would need to be relocated. That is for the manager of the hotel to manage and move a resident who may be displeased. It's a different level of disappointment from a permanent resident than it would be a person staying here. And that's the job of a hotel manager in anywhere. As you know, that these Marriotts are all over, they're on every off-ramp around the country. So they are dealing with truck traffic, and they know how to manage it well. The reason they're there is because of the truck traffic and the industry, so they seem to be able to manage it well. We're confident they'll be able to manage their own noise issues.
Yeah. And the last time we talked to Grading Pacific, they have eight trucks a day.
The majority of the hotels I end up staying in are typically by airports or freeways.
Exactly.
And so this, when I, that's one of the things I actually thought of when I saw this hotel, was actually the lack of noise for the clients compared to other hotels that I frequented.
I agree.
I'm for conference. I prepared the noise study for the project.
Okay.
I took twenty-four hour noise measurements on the side of diagonal, and so assessed the current noise levels at the side, and looked at the hotel, standard hotel construction would be adequate to hit the forty-five decibel interior noise standard. I mean, the other thing is with the California Tuttle, twenty-four energy standards, they would require to put upgraded windows in as it is, which provide the additional sound insulation. So they're going to be well below the standards, so it's not going to be an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
My next question. The parking issue for employees, and I think it's valid. I don't think you'll ever have a hundred and eight rooms full, but that would be nice. But the other problem is, what about the employees? Where do they park?
Excellent question. Typical operating hours and check-in time, checkout times of hotels come into play. It's atypical. So it'd be unlikely that the lot would be full in the peak hours. And basically, a typical hotel, check-in time is after three o'clock. Early check-in time is requested, and that can be arranged for the guest. And employees typically come in for work, you know, about seven-thirty, eight o'clock. So, and guests usually check out, you know, well before, you know, eight o'clock to that eleven o'clock range. So there's a good flow that leaves and a flow that comes in for the employees.
You're going to have another unique problem, because our school district does present a problem to some of the people in the area as far as how you're going to monitor to keep the students from using it as a parking lot. That's not our problem. It will be yours, but it's something you need to think about, as well as the fact that just south of there, there's a nice little shopping center that doesn't have parking either, and they will potentially use your lot. So those are things that you're going to have to really give some thought to, how you're going to manage that.
Thank you. Thank you for that input. We'll take that into consideration.
And for its staff, I have a question. And maybe counsel. Agreements. I can understand why you wouldn't finalize an agreement per se, because you don't have the project guaranteed to be built. Is this common for a lot of us to have them come to us this way first?
I think it is common that it happens this way. The hotel franchise doesn't want to get into it if they don't have the entitlements. We do have conditions of approval in there that require if it's not a Marriott, it's at least a three-star, triple-rated hotel. So you, it can't be a bait and switch that we're promised a Fairfield and we get a Motel Six.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
No, not for, kind of fall off. So constantly, even though this is common practice, and there's language requires to get three-star.
I believe that's what the condition is.
That's what I read.
But we still don't know the length of the franchise agreement. I mean, they could come in with an agreement that expires in five years, and then we don't have Marriott. We have whoever wants to be there.
As long as they're at the same level.
Right.
Marriott name, if it was a Hilton equivalent, the conditions would allow that. And you want, you want them to be able to continue as a hotel. Whether it was Marriott, whether it was Hilton, as long as it was the same level, you guys, what we don't want you to have to do is worry about a bait and switch situation, or something a lot less than what is proposed tonight.
Who decides if it's a three-star? Is that a AAA? Who makes that decision? Where is that?
We found it in a number of, in a number of descriptions of hotels in, and I'll read you the condition, because we tried to also take a little time to explain it, that it just wasn't three-star. It was...
Some three-star, triple diamonds.
Yeah. I'll read it to you, Victor.
Three diamonds.
So the hotel shall be developed to the AAA, three-diamond standard or better, as described below. More attention has been paid to style and decor, amenities and services, better curb appeal landscaping and lighting in the parking lot and entry, carpet, wood, tile floors with accent rugs, small gift shops, swimming pool, hot tub, exercise room, full-service restaurant or food court and a lounge, large guest rooms with coordinated furniture, internet access, elevators. So we also described the amenities we wanted to see in a replacement should it not continue to be a Marriott.
These seven A through H, were they developed by staff, or is this some kind of hotel guide?
I think we found it in a hotel guidebook or another city staff report from another city. Because we wanted to make sure that we had conditions that stuck with this development, and you didn't have, you know, anything could happen to a developer. They could sell a property, they could flip a property. We want to make sure that the conditions that the planning commission wrote for at least the eighteen months that's required at this level.
Is this three diamond, is this similar to the star system? In other words, five being the top and three being the middle?
AAA uses up to five diamonds, with five being very rare. I mean, it's the most exceptional hotels.
The St. Regis's of the world, the Ritz Carlton of the worlds.
Four Seasons.
Four Seasons, correct.
Go ahead, Art.
For the applicant. I'd like to talk about architecture. Staff made, at least it says in the report, made several requests of you for modifying the architectural style to more comport with the style that we have in the, in the area, i.e., we'll call it an early California-type architecture. And it says to no avail on your part. Why?
You know, after much lengthy conversations with leading experts studying the contemporary movement, where the hospitality industry is moving, what the transient guests are requesting of hotels, and today and into the future, these experts have advised that this contemporary model serves the best purpose for the business model that we have done in our feasibility study at the outset of this project. And the major concern of shifting or making adjustments to the contemporary model would is undermining the purpose of that look and that contemporary feel that is known and marketed by Marriott so heavily in the Fairfield Inn and Suites brand.
And Art, can I add something? Because I was in one of those meetings with Steve, and they weren't asking for it to be early California. They were asking for more architectural details, right? Make it a little more interesting. We weren't asking them to completely change the look of it. It was just to add something to it.
Okay. Okay. But nonetheless, I, I mean, I appreciate the video, and that described, I think, adequately and probably, you know, completely the wants and the needs of the millennial generation that you're attempting to market to. But I noticed, but that's all on the interior of the building. You know, all of the amenities, the videos that we saw were directed to the needs of the customer once they're in the property, okay? The gyms, the computer access, the Wi-Fi, et cetera, et cetera. I guess where I, my concern lies in the, in the, in the architecture, the post-modern style, and fitting into the overall, I'll say, genre of the city. And if that necessitates a change, a radical change, then that necessitates that change. There are, there are Fairfield Inns, we brought this up in our last meeting, I'm sure Mr. Mendoza shared it with you, went online, brought them up, I think Temecula was one of them, and that's a Fairfield Inn that, I mean, would you be going into Santa Fe, New Mexico with this style? I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I'll just, just a rhetorical, I mean...
I mean, it's a very valid point you make there. The property in Temecula, I want to just discuss that, that actually was a previous brand that was rebranded into a Fairfield Inn Suites brand. There's been four generations of the involvement of the Fairfield Inn and Suites brand by Marriott. This is the fourth generation. The hotel industry is very competitive. The hotels seek to, you know, competition between rooms and selling points, and they, they study these market segments, and this is one of the big things that every hotel brand is hitting. And because we're going for a business-class hotel here, this contemporary design is ideal, ideal for this Los Alamos community.
How? How, you make the statement, but how? If I were, well, I am a businessman, but if I were traveling, and when I do travel, and I stay at Marriott's by and large, whether it's a courtyard or Residence Inn, I'm after Marriott, and I look at the prices, you know, and I get the best price I can for whatever, and I want to make sure that I have Wi-Fi, I want to make sure that I have the amenities once I get in there. I mean, whether it happens to be, and I've stayed in this exact design in Moore, Oklahoma a few years ago, and I stayed in the other ones. And I'm not particularly interested so much in the architecture of where I'm going, because I know I'm only going to be there one night, or maybe two nights. But I want the amenities that were all laid out in that video, and I want the guarantee, and I want the service, which Marriott delivers. Okay? So I like the brand, I like everything about it. Sitting here and living in this city and driving by that property every day, maybe three or four times a day, I want to see something that kind of fits, fits the neighborhood. And for me, that style does not fit. I mean, man, that's as simple as, that's as simple as I can make it. I mean, I'm okay with everything. I would condition approval, I would, I would condition any issuance of permits and all that upon receipt of a, of a signed agreement from Marriott. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't let this thing get switched, you know, prior to anything like that. I believe you. I mean, I'm not disputing you or anything like that, but just, it's business. And, but for me, for me, the problem is the overall architecture. I don't think it fits the city. I don't have a problem with the height. I, I'm, it's set far enough back from the property that the height is, I don't see that as a major detriment. But I see three boxes there, four boxes with windows. You know, and if that's, that might be the style up in, you know, up around San Francisco Airport, when you fly in up there and you, Silicon Valley, you have that. This isn't Silicon Valley. And I really think the customers are after what's inside the property, once they get through the door. And for us, I think it's what's outside the property. I doubt that any of us will stay in your, in your, in your hotel, because we all live here. Okay? So we get to drive by it. All I'm going to hear about from my neighbors and residents in the area is going to be is going to be the critique, the critique of the, of the architecture, day in and day out. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you for your input. I know Los Alamos is a great place to work, eat, live and, and play. And, and you know, I, I appreciate your concern. And I understand that, you know, everyone has their own view of what architecturally is, is pleasant, subjective. It's a subjective opinion and, and I, I respect your, your opinion. And quite frankly, this, this model has been developed and, you know, a lot of, a lot of professionals went this way and that way with this, with this model. And, and it's, the, the reason why I brought the other contemporary models where the other brands are going, they're going to this look. So, this is from, from an eye, from an, from an eye point, if you, if you're standing from a six foot point of view, the, and you walk the building, it has a different appeal than you see it from a rendering or a drawing. So, I'm not, I'm not sure if anyone had an opportunity to visit maybe even the Tustin branch. And I know, Mr. Bolt, you said you have stayed...
I've stayed, I've stayed in that exact one.
Right. Stayed in something very similar to this. Just wanted to see if any commissioners have, have walked the building and seen and experienced the same, same way Art has.
I have not. But Art, I, I'm with you in a, in a, in a sense where, where I'm, I'm a little torn because of that, you know, character and charm that you lose by going to something like this in a small, small city with, that we're used to accustomed seeing that kind of old, you know, California style, Spanish style, whatever you want to call it, where this just flat out doesn't fit. But then, you know, he said it many times, their market, their catering to is, is not us. It's to the millennials, it's to the people that go online, they go on their phone, they look at...
They go online?
Let me, let me finish. I know you, as, as we all do. But they go on and they're making their reservations, they're, they're looking at photos, they're looking at exterior photos online. And that's, you know, the type of architecture that actually appeals to that younger generation. That being said also, I started thinking about it, I'm looking at it, I'm like, if you really look at it, maybe close one eye, it really doesn't look much different than our hospital building that we just did out front there. There's a very similar look...
Very similar.
To that. And not, not that it's a hospital, whatever, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it is a fit. If you talk about other franchises, restaurant franchises, they all have the same look, no matter where they go in the United States, they all try to make them look the same so that when you go to that location, wherever it is in the States, there's a certain comfort that you feel because you're used to seeing that style or, of, of that location. And this is a franchise, it's, it's a brand that they're trying to do. So, it's not an individual where you have an independent hotel, if you will, that could come in and, and do that. But that's why I asked the question about the Spanish style on that fourth generation, which turns out to be, it was a different, different hotel initially. But that's why I asked the question, because if there was an option to put that in, I think it would fit better. But I, I see where you're going with the market that you're trying to cater to. And they are after that kind of more contemporary design. So, but I, I am with you. I'm a little...
And I would just reply to that, that I, I understand fully what they're saying. They, they vet their market, their marketer are the customers that are going to stay in the hotel.
Right.
But, but we are the people, we are the people who have to live with what we see when we drive by. We won't be staying in that.
Correct.
And, and while that might, that style might fit somewhere else, like you say, it, it's out of, it's out, it might be out of place here. You said it, it is out, to me, it is out of place. It will fit every unit that I would be looking for. And I'm not afraid to stay in one of them, but I really don't care because I'm only going to be there for a night.
Correct.
But on the other hand, located here at that location, and that might be, you know, forgetting the hospital for a second, that's a whole different issue. But, but where this is sandwiched in, right in the, right in this little...
The heart of work.
Pedestrian walking area we're trying to design. And we, we drop this in the middle of it. If this is not, if, if we like a hotel and want a hotel, which I don't have a problem with, okay, then I think it has to fit, just like we would, just like what we do to the, to the, the condominiums that are built, to the, you know, we, we ask for certain changes and stuff, certain design. We, we try to, try to have it fit, fit in. And, and this is, to me, this is a radical departure and, and...
It is, it is a radical departure, but at least it's like clean looking and neat. I mean, the place next door, place on either side, neither one of those is an award-winning building. I mean, if I could mow all those down, I would.
Well, but they're, but they're older, they're older and they're in that style. And we are, and we are, if, if that, and we act, well, that has been the, the, I'll say the, I'm not going to say the guiding principle of, of, of early California, but it's been, I mean, it's actually in our code, under the architectural stuff. But, but we haven't, we digressed here and there. And I, but I think, looking at a, at this location, I'm, I think that's, it's, I don't care for the architecture, I, I think something more in a, and it can be done. It's a question of not, it's a question of spending more money to do it, okay? And if it's not a Fairfield, then it's a, it's, maybe it's another, another brand within Marriott. And I mentioned Santa Fe, because if any of you have ever been to Santa Fe, this isn't going to come, come close. And I, I will assure you, if they want to put a Fairfield Inn in, in Santa Fe, it's going to have the, the Spanish mission look with the, you know, the adobe, adobe walls and the, you know, and the, the round beams, the logs poking out. That will be, you, you go to Santa Fe, that's all you see. And I'm not saying that we're Santa Fe, but nonetheless, I think we have a, a, we need to be concerned about the architecture. So, that's where, that's where I'm at. Beyond that, I like the project.
Can we go back to another picture where they didn't have any? There was the other one that you had and it's just there, that. What happens when I look at that, I see cold. Now, let's go forward back to the one you had, I'm sorry, Tom. Now, see the foliage there and the trees? See, that really sets it out to look different. What you can do different, if we don't change the design of the building, is what kind of trees you do to accent, lighting maybe, something that would kind of add to it. And I have no other clues on that one. I mean, my thinking, if you put certain types of trees in, it complements the area. You put lighting in, it'll help make it look a little bit nicer. Otherwise, I don't have an issue with the design of it. I understand where he's going with it. And I recognize that I'm not the millennium that he's trying to attract.
Art, the other, the other thing too, with respect to that, I mean, what we also hope for at the end of the day is that he does, you know, fill it. Because if we get this pedestrian area with eateries and, and different things to walk on, you want those businesses to be supported by something like this. And you, you want people to be attracted to it, the people that he's trying to attract, to come and stay and actually spend their money within that area and that they can all walk to from, from that location. So, you know, again, I, I...
I, 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 I understand fully.
Yeah.
But again, you know, if it's not this gentleman, this is the second person coming in with the idea of a hotel.
Right.
If, if the, if the, if the, if the, if it doesn't fit for him with this style, then it could fit with somebody else who's willing to come in and make the, you know, come in and, and bring something that would be acceptable, okay? I, I'm not, I'm not in a rush to, to have that property. It'd be nice to have it developed. It's been vacant for thirty years, okay? It'd be nice, it'd be nice to see it developed. But to me, it has to be a project that I think is amenable to and, and fits into the city. And, and, I mean, obviously that has to, you've got to convince a majority of us, but we will all be going by there every day and you'll be talking to your neighbors, my neighbors and all that and we'll, you know, and it'll be great. Well, this is what they were trying to, the rationale will be, well, this is what, this is the market they were trying to cater to and this, and these people that, that are here for only one night, this is what they like. But we're here, we're here forever.
I think if you, yeah.
That's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
At least for a while.
Yeah.
The, the, the overall theme of the city, obviously, is that if you look at this overhead and you look at what's really placed around the hotel, you don't see a ton of, of the old California right there in that general vicinity.
And that's the unfortunate part about our city. Fortunate and unfortunate. As one community development director said years ago, "The problem with Los Alamos for redevelopment is we have businesses that are too successful so that you can't just go in and tear them down because they are too successful." But eventually, you know, they will go, whether we have, whether it's, you know, they just fall apart or, you know, we have an earthquake. At some point, you know, they will go. And I guess if we have a theme, we ought to try to maintain the theme, in, in my opinion. And are there departures? Yes, we have departures, we've, other commissions have departed from it. And we have, I mean, just go across the street and down a little bit to the, to the Southland Building. You know, all brick and, and glass, okay? But I don't know, it seems to fit, okay? Wasn't, it, it's a departure, but to me, this is something I would expect to see, you know, in a brand new area, brand, you know, go out to Tustin, go out to Irvine where they've demoed the, you know, they're starting with a clean slate and this is what they're coming in with and that's the style, that's the style for down there.
Interestingly...
I mean, that's, that's just, you know, it's a preference thing, I guess. And so, that's, you know, that's where I'm at.
Do we have a motion?
Do you want a motion?
I have some points of discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to make some comments. I'm going to start, I'm going to follow the staff report. Follow the staff report. I'd like to first start with Tom's comment that this is a blighted property. I don't see it as a blighted property. It's been undeveloped for thirty years, but that's because it was contaminated and was not able to be developed. It's recently been cleaned up. I don't see it as blighted property. I see, if it was blighted, it would be a code enforcement violation, the city would deal with it. It is a vacant property, it's an opportunity for the city to put something viable and something that's going to take the city in the direction that, that we've all talked about for the last few months. And I don't see this as being the project to do that. There was a lot of, a lot of adjectives thrown out in the background and I think a lot of them based on assumptions that, you know, it is, first of all, the franchise thing is very unsettling with me. But that's something that seems to be, everybody seems to be comfortable with. It says, you know, it, it tries to make this project look great by saying it's going to have a small food market. Well, so, so what? I mean, every place has a little kiosk. And, and it, it talks about all the business travelers and tourists going to come here. I never saw, I've never heard any discussion about any study that verifies that there's going to be a certain percentage of occupancy. So, there's a big assumption being made that this, that this place is going to be a destination for a lot of people. I don't see any evidence of that. And talks about shopping and dining. Again, who's going to do that? We have no evidence that this, that there's any studies to be done that this place is going to attract tourists, attract business people. Talks, it says it's going to be attractive, pedestrian-friendly town center, possibly. But again, you know, that, those are all just inflammatory adjectives. And it talks about being the heart of the community. And this is a property that could, that is going to be the heart of the community. And I think that we could put something better there than, than this. Talks about the investment and economic engine. Again, I don't know that there's any studies. We've never seen anything that's telling us that this is going to bring in X amount of revenues. This is all assumptions and presumptions. The widening of Brigham and, any property, any development, any project that goes on this property, that's going to be required of them. So, this is nothing special. Whoever develops this property is going to be required to widen Brigham. So, that's not something this project gets in the plus column, because anybody's going to have to do that. You know, and again, the traffic patterns, I think, have been fully vetted. I think there's issues about how people are going to act, leave Serpentine, crossing over Los Alamos Boulevard. I think that's going to be a huge problem. Again, this, this is not the project that I think that this city needs on that very, very valuable piece of property. That's right in the heart of the city. I think we can do better. And again, if they're not, they're talking about, they don't want, Mr. DeBolt talked about changing an architecture and all their response was that their, their company has decided that this is what's best for their company. And I didn't hear one word in that, in that response talking about our city. So, they want to put whatever they want in the pri, the most prime property in our city and we're supposed to accept it because it's going to be good for their business? And I don't think that's what this commission's about. I think this commission's about being determined, deciding what's best for the city, not for Marriott, for the city and for the businesses in the city and for the future development of the city. So, I, I am very much against this project as it stands. And if they want to come back with some changes, then I'd possibly revisit my position. But again, I just don't think a hotel is what we want in that very, very valuable piece of property. So, that's what I have to say. Oh, another. Let me just, let me just go on page six of nine, CUP analysis. And there's a bunch of bullet points. And some of this might be repetition of what I said. And it says increased property taxes with improvement of property. Yes, because there's no property taxes there now. So, anything we put on there is going to increase it. So, that's, that's, that's irrelevant. Elimination of blighted property. Again, I don't think this is a blighted property. I think this is vacant property, I think this is an opportunity. New customers surrounding business. Again, there's no study that's telling us how many people are coming in here to stay. This is all speculation. Construction jobs during building phase. Yes, that's fine, but that's going to, it's a finite time and once those construction jobs are gone, that's, that's not an issue for the city anymore. And that's not an issue for the city anymore, it's an issue for jobs that may or may, may or may not come out of this, this city. Straightening of intersection between Sausalito and Brigham. Again, any project is going to be required to do that. And improve the image of Los Alamos as a destination. That's an opinion, there's no fact. It's a, it's a hotel. How's that going to improve our city as a destination? I just don't get, some of these things are just unsubstantiated statements. And I think we ought to think long and hard about, about this project. Now...
Now you're done? Gary?
I don't know.
I actually like a hotel project for that piece of property. And I think it would bring, I mean, look, we've got Brew Kitchen, we got Shannon Doe across the street. I mean, I think it would really help increase the business in that area. And those people wouldn't have to drive over to eat at Brew Kitchen Ale House and cause parking problems, they could walk over. But, I mean, yeah, the architecture, I think, could be improved. But the overall project, I like. And I do think, did you, did the applicant, did you guys do any kind of occupancy studies for like the hotels that are down, like the Residence Inn on Cotella or any of those? Do you know what their occupancy rates are?
Uh, yeah, just to touch bases on your, your point. You made some very good points and, you know, I, you know, I appreciate your input. With this, during the feasibility studies, we calculate several aspects to the viability of a hotel. What type of hotel, the type of clientele that it will generate. We had extensive meetings with representatives from Marriott and they also help us with that study as well. So, as far as transient tax dollars that this property would generate, we're estimating somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand per year. So, that's, that's the amount of revenue we should be expecting. So, it's, you know, it's, it's basically a partnership between, you know, the city, you know, the franchisee and the franchisor. And to answer your question, in the past, Marriott doesn't give any franchise agreements that are less than twenty years. So, it's going to be a twenty-year agreement.
Go ahead.
So, if we condition this, well, I'm going to vote against it, but if, if, if the commissioners don't want to condition, vote in favor of this, if they condition this on franchise agreement coming forward from Marriott with a term twenty years or more, that could be arranged?
Yeah, that could be arranged.
And also the study you talked about with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in bed occupancy, can you bring that... And also the study you talked about with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in bed occupancy, can you bring that, that?
That, that study was conducted about six months ago. So there's been a lot of additions to the supply of the market area, so that, all the feasibility needs to be done again. And I'm not sure if the commissioners are aware, but Long Beach is introducing modern architecture, Hampton Inn. It's about two hundred and forty-one rooms. It just affects the supply. That's what, that's what I was trying to get at. So it's an economic supply and demand that a hotel operates on, so.
So the studies are available?
It's, yeah, they're available.
Would any commissioners like to see those studies? No?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the project with the changes on number seventy-three, on page nine of eleven that they brought up earlier. And, I'm getting there. And the condition with the franchise agreement being that of twenty years or more as requested, yeah, with Marriott, as requested by Commissioner Solfetanik.
Prior to issuance of building permit?
Pardon?
Prior to issuance of building permit? Okay.
We have two separate resolutions on this one, so.
Well, we only one set of conditions.
Yeah, one set of conditions, but two sets of resolutions.
Yes, sir. Right.
Okay, do we motion both at the same time?
You can.
Okay. Then I make a motion for the second condition, for the site conditional use permit.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, I guess we'll talk about it a little bit more.
You have a first, but they didn't get a second. What do we do?
Now, anybody wanna make a second for further discussion?
You can make a second.
Or, or an alternate motion at this point if there's, no second to the motion.
I'll make a motion to deny. Yeah?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, so that was two for the denial and four against the denial?
Yes.
Larry, I didn't hear you.
I said aye on the denial. I mean, against the denial, sorry.
Against the.
Okay.
Three and three.
So right now.
Two for.
Two for, okay.
Okay.
So.
So we didn't get a motion on a second to approve, and we voted against the motion to deny.
So we can talk about it a little further.
Right.
I, I would, I would agree with the chair. I like the project, okay? I like the project. I have, the problem for me is the architecture.
I like the project. The problem for me is the architecture. The way I look at it, if, if this, this is the second application for a hotel within a year, okay? If the word is getting out or gets out that there is a site available for a hotel in Los Alameda's, and if those applicants come in, it may not be a Marriott, but there are other properties that are, I will say, equivalent. There has to be, because we have a condition in here that there better be, okay? And so, you know, be that a Hilton, be that a, one of the other brands that are willing to come in here and are willing to come in with not such a modern building. And I'm not necess, I'm not necessarily hung up completely on a early California mission, but it had, to me, this is the extreme. And, and not knowing what that would look like until I see it, then that, that's what I would say. Just to kind of soften this off a little bit, is that I agree with you, but for me, it's the architecture.
You could. I was going to say, another possible motion would be to continue this to the next meeting to allow the applicant to see if he can make some changes that would soften it to the commissions.
I'd like to comment on Larry. He made a point earlier that certain brands, Marriott, Fairfield, they wanted to have their buildings look a certain way because that's their brand. That's partially true, but not necessarily always the case. We had a project a couple of years ago, it was a Carl's Jr., and they had different types of building.
For different areas.
Plans, and one was extremely modern, and we chose not to have that one. They put something a little more contemporary in there, so they're not rigid. They can change it if they want. And like Art said, if they don't want to, obviously, this is a very attractive piece of property because we've been courted twice a year. If they don't wanna do, if they don't wanna accommodate us, somebody else will.
Yeah, the one in Tuscan almost looked even a little more industrial, like an industrial building, more so than this one for whatever reason. I don't know if the palette was different or what have you, but it's.
Same building.
Yeah, it just looked different in the pictures. So. I, I would probably be more apt to look at something like that where they could possibly come back and see if there's.
I'm willing to continue if they want to try to work on it.
If we are going to continue it for that purpose, can we also request some additional, some additional information as they attest to this certain amount of occupancy, it's two hundred and fifty thousand a year? Something to support that allegation, I would, yeah.
That's an easy calculation of the eight percent per room per night. It's saying that's, that's.
Best occupancy rate.
Yeah, we, our finance department did it at eighty-five percent. It came out with two hundred and twenty-five thousand a year.
So somebody's saying that this is gonna be eighty-five percent full?
Yeah, that's what we ran the numbers at, eighty-five percent.
Really?
At its best, because we use Best Western as the example. This, this wouldn't be built if Best Western wasn't being as successful as it is.
Do we have, do we have any occupancy numbers of the hotels down off of Cotella?
In the other cities, no. I wouldn't have, we're privy to the other cities' private information regarding TOT that's created from those. Yeah.
It's not a city's information. It's Marriott's. I mean, they could bring Courtyard Marriott right down on Cotella. They could bring that information.
He, the applicant can.
Right.
The, the numbers that you're alluding to are numbers that are specific to Marriott, and Marriott would need to release that to us. And it, the study that we done, that we rendered was basically in the three-mile radius of Los Alameda's, so it took into consideration the properties on the corridor of Cotella, Long Beach, and even the, excluding the Ayers property, because they don't, they don't contribute to the story board. So calculating the numbers, it's seventy, seventy-five percent occupancy at, I think, a hundred, eighty, eighty-five ADR. That's what the, that's how you get to that, that figure, RevPAR. So you multiply RevPAR by occupancy times the rooms, and you get to that, the gross number. And you apply the TOT taxes to that. That's how you get to the number.
Okay, so if we do do a motion to continue this to next month and have you come back with alternate plan, is that something you're interested in?
Well, you know, we go back to our feasibility studies that we conducted, and I, we just, it's, it's hard for us to know subjectively what you guys are looking for, because Marriott studies the market. They understand what, where the market is going, and to reach that, that occupancy rate and that rate, it would need to match a certain demographic that they're targeting. And that's basically the, the problem in the feasibility is that this model is beta-tested, it's successful, it works. And, you know, it's something that, that, that we believe in, and that's why we brought it to the table. And, you know, altering it would, you know, compromise the, what it stands for. So that's kind of like, our, our stance is there. But the, the project is not cheap. We're looking at, close, somewhere close to fifteen million dollars to get this project finished. And if we look, if we, if we go more towards like a resort-type feel and, and something that's what you alluded to, that courtyard look, that, that property was very expensive to build, and that's a primary market that they built that in. So the numbers made sense there. They get roughly around two hundred and fifty to, you know, all the way upwards of five, five hundred dollars sometimes for those rooms. And our range here is, you know, we're, we're going after the business clientele, and we're going after the millennial class, realistically, for the future generation, because we want this project to be viable, not only today, for the years to come. If the project is viable, so, so are the contributions to the city and, and the general fund. So we, we definitely take that into consideration, because the market moves and we have to move with the market as, as hoteliers.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue this to the next meeting to give the applicant time to, he could probably get a copy of a DVD of this meeting and so he can, he can hear the comments and play them to his, play it for his designer or whatever, and to try to get just a feel of what we're, what we're striving for, and to see if he can't come back with something that might be a little more acceptable. So I, I mean, just to give him the time.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Can we have a roll call on that?
Okay.
Chair Polty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Andre?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Opposed.
Commissioner Lo?
Opposed.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Solfetanik?
No.
Okay, that motion fails then too.
I think that when we look at the project in this picture, it is dull, and no offense, and that's what I see. I see boxes, and that's not the image that I really wanna see. The other picture, now it's the same building, but you've used landscaping to highlight it, and that probably would have been better if you brought to the meeting a picture that had the trees, whether it's palm trees, whether, whatever they are. I think it adds a lot more interest to the building when the landscaping is done. And so it doesn't look so boxy and square. I think that's one of the problems that I see with it. Again, I'm not opposed to the building. I am, I understand the group you're catering to. I understand the Marriott name. I understand what their target audience is at this time. I would like to see better landscaping to bring this building into something more of a family-type, millennium-style building, if that makes any sense. But to target the right group, but also to bring it more into our family atmosphere, and I think that's where my problem is. But in that, I'm not opposed to the project.
I'll second Commissioner Gross's motion.
What, I'm sorry, what?
That she made earlier.
Which motion is that?
The first one I made?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll remake it, the same one, this one because I don't have to re-speak it.
Yes. Remake it, please.
Oh, you want me to remake the whole thing? Okay. I make a motion to accept this project with the changes to item number seventy-three on page nine? I forgot the page.
That's okay.
Anyway, as brought, and with the contractual agreement to be in place, the twenty-year-plus agreement. What was the other part on that?
Prior to issuance of the.
Prior to issuing the building permit, and I make a motion to accept the second part of the CUP.
Okay, to approve both resolutions. And now, Gary, we have a second?
I'm a second.
Now you can speak.
Now you can, go ahead.
Okay, before we do anything on that, I, this may be purely subjective on my part. We're talking about the architecture, and that is what it is, but I almost feel like even the choice of the color palette, that the way that it is gives it a colder feeling and not maybe the warmer feeling that it could be, just based on the color palette alone and the stone that's being used, if you take a look at it. I mean, you changed that on that building, and it actually takes on an entirely different, different look.
But I like the color palette.
That's what I'm saying. It's completely subjective at that point.
Yes, so that's a problem.
In the sense of making it a warmer, maybe a softer, maybe a softer, a softer look. In that regard.
I don't, yeah, I think it's also difficult to always tell by pictures and that. Some of these go up and they look so much nicer. But see, I like the colors, sorry.
Okay, and since Wendy brought up the landscaping, I'm gonna have to bring up the landscaping. And the one thing that I did notice in the prior hotel that came up, wasn't there a, like a direct access down? The, it just, I'm looking at this, and I don't see where, the people who are staying here, they're gonna have to walk through the driveway to get across the street to Shenandoah or Brew Kitchen Ale House. It seems like you would want some sort of path. I mean, even coming out of the Porta Cocheare.
Go to the top.
It doesn't look like there's, on the landscape drawing, that there's a path.
We could put in a path easily enough.
And, and my, my one other comment on that is, I agree kind of that big square of landscaping in the middle. I would like to see a little bit more on the Boulevard and make that, because this is, you know, what we've been talking about as kind of the center of town. It's like, have a little bit more there than, I don't know, the big square in the middle, but that's just my opinion. Is there a path that I'm missing on that drawing?
I don't think that we could put.
You're not missing it.
Okay.
You could put it in.
I even got a magnifying glass out at home and looked at it.
As, as an example, when I'm talking about colors.
Yeah, well, that's what I said on lighting, yes.
On lighting too, but if you take a look at the colors that are being used on this, it gives it more of a neutral, almost, you could fit it into more of a early California tone, if you will, on colors versus yellow and black. That's, that's the difference that I'm talking about.
That is a black one. I would just do it with lighting. Like I said, I, I really like the colors. I actually like the colors.
You guys have any comment on colors?
No.
Spanish stucco on the side.
They could put that pathway right there with the.
Porta Cocheare.
But they could do that, so. You have two motions?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Do a roll call.
Do a roll.
Have we do a roll call?
Okay, then do a roll call.
Aye.
Vice Chair Andre?
Opposed.
Commissioner DeBolt?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Solfetanik?
No.
Three noes, three yeses.
Hence the reason we.
Continue this till we have the seventh commissioner for the next, well, he can watch the video to catch up.
With counsel, what do we do?
So is it based on?
Wait, did we, the motion to continue, that was tied also?
Yes.
I think the ayes were for different reasons.
And the yays are for different reasons. Well, six different reasons.
I'm, I'm willing to continue it now that we've exhausted those votes. Like we can continue it. I'm, I'm fine with continuing it, continuing it, and John's here, and we have seven people.
So there's a motion, a new motion to continue?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Our second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so. Four to two to continue.
Okay. We'll continue it to the next meeting.
Can we take a break, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, what?
Can we take a break?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you for your time, commissioners.
General Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Tonight before you is a report recommending a general plan amendment and a zoning map amendment to the twenty-eight acre site commonly known as Arrowhead Properties. The change would be from, and this is complicated, from the current general plan designation of planned industrial with a retail overlay to retail business. Now, that's the general plan. And then the zone change would be from planned light industrial with a retail overlay to general commercial or CG. So that would be the recommended changes. The assessor parcel, there's four assessor parcel numbers, two four one, two four one oh eight, oh nine, one zero, and one one, more commonly known as forty-four eleven Catella Avenue. The Los Alamos City Council has asked the planning commission to consider a general plan amendment and a zoning map change to this property as described previously. Their request was formally initiated by the city council via resolution number two zero one six dash oh seven, which was adopted by the city council on March twenty-first of two thousand sixteen. The city of Los Alamos recently approved zoning ordinance to create the retail overlay allowing more flexible uses for Arrowhead. But due to recent events, it is now understood by city officials that the adoption of the retail overlay zone does not preclude new development from developing under the existing planned light industrial zone permitted and conditionally permitted uses. The proposed changes that are proposed tonight would eliminate and reduce or reduce future new development of industrial areas as well as the expansion of Arrowhead's current use and increase land availability for retail uses. These changes could be found consistent with the general plan goals and the desires of the community. As you remember, there is much talk of this when we redid the general plan. Larry, you weren't here, but I think you've caught up to speed on a lot of the general plan discussions. The general plan and the environmental impact report initially reviews, reviewed and considered this as an opportunity site and looked at creating a retail overlay, I'm sorry, looked at creating retail zoning for the property. And through being approached by Arrowhead Properties, there was a compromise reached that the, the commission and the city council both agreed that maybe the underlying use of industrial stayed with a retail overlay so that if they did develop this property in the future, that it could possibly become retail. Well, that indeed was not what happened and another project was proposed at this, this site that met the industrial part of the code only and not the retail part of the goals. And I think that brings you up to speed on some of that history. So tonight, the city council is asking you to, they asking you to consider first, a general plan amendment and then a zone change. If approved tonight, it'll sit on the shelf for a few weeks while we go through the process required by SBA team for tribal consultation because we have to run that ninety-day period out before this could go before the city council. So it'll, it'll sit around for a little while before it goes to the city council. With that, we would recommend you opening the public hearing. There has been a letter submitted by a law firm representing JCB slash Arrowhead. You all have copies of that letter and I think there's extra copies at the counter available for any members of the public. It's the letter dated May twenty-fourth from Susan Horry. You'll see Susan Horry's name on the top right and the May twenty-fourth on the top left to make sure you're looking at the correct letter. With that, we would recommend that the commission, the chair open the public hearing, take any testimony needed, and then deliberate. And we have a staff recommendation in the report.
Okay, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing if somebody would like to come up and speak on this item.
Good evening, oh, good evening, Chair Colty and members of the commission. I am Susan Horry and you do have my letter, which sets out the reasons why we oppose the proposed amendment to change the land use and the zoning from industrial to retail on the site. I'm here tonight representing Arrowhead Products as well as the landowner, JCB Inc. I'd like to begin by saying that Arrowhead intends to continue its operations on the property and would like to remain in the city. But to be perfectly honest, it is increasingly harder and harder to do so. As Mr. Mendoza mentioned, just last year, the city adopted the general plan that said it would support Arrowhead's continued operation and success. The general plan also spoke to maintaining the integrity of industrial areas and preserving the economic viability of existing industrial businesses. As Mr. Mendoza mentioned, and I know that you carefully considered this as well, when the general plan update was first proposed, it considered zoning this land residential, I'm sorry, retail and also designating it for retail uses. We understand that the city wanted to see, you know, eventually bringing more retail to the city and that this was an opportunity site. However, that would have, you know, significantly impacted Arrowhead's ability to continue its operations, to expand and to modify its, its buildings. And because of that, I think that we reached a really effective compromise which would allow the industrial uses to be retained on the site. The land use and the zoning would be industrial and a retail overlay would be imposed, speaking to the city's desire to see retail uses if the property were ever redeveloped. As I mentioned, we felt that this was a good compromise and, and it did give the landowner the option to consider how the site could best be used in the future. But for the present, Arrowhead does intend to continue operating there and therefore has very significant concerns about the city's actions. As you know, Arrowhead is one of the city's largest and oldest private employers in the city and they're very concerned about the limitations that would be imposed on their ability to use their property if these amendments were enacted. If they were approved, Arrowhead becomes a non-conforming use. This means that they could not expand and they could not intensify its operations on the site. This would effectively limit the types of contracts that they can pursue for their business. Also, if the amendments are approved, Arrowhead cannot expand its industrial operations and the landowner would be left with a small area behind the existing buildings that could only be built for retail uses. But based upon our conversations with, you know, real property brokers as to whether or not this is a viable retail site, I mean, we've been informed that retail uses, that the back part of the property, property is not at all conducive to retail development because of the fact that you have two very large structures fronting Catella. And so it would be difficult, if not impossible, to put any sort of retail uses on the back side of the property. And lastly, as we, we mentioned in our letter, even if we could develop retail or any other use on the back part of the property, right now, the land is affected arguably by a settlement agreement that the city entered into with the city of Cypress and Cottonwood Church, which would limit any new driveways on Lexington from the Arrowhead site. And therefore, access off of Lexington would also be difficult to obtain. So effectively, these amendments would limit Arrowhead's growth and operations and we'd leave the landowner with a property that could not be feasibly developed. As I said, we do understand the city's desire for more retail development, but singling out one property owner who has a thriving business on its site and limiting the use of that property, we don't feel is the right way to do that. We would request the city to retain the existing industrial land use and zoning with the retail overlay and we think that this is a more effective way of addressing the city's concerns than the proposed amendments that you have before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
As our community development director can most likely attest to, I am the biggest champion of turning that piece of property into general commercial in the city. There are other people who've said, I'm trying to get rid of Arrowhead. I'm not trying to get rid of Arrowhead. I'm just looking at the future development of our city. And that, that piece of property is a massive revenue opportunity. This was validated in our general plan and we have a really good opportunity here, whether Arrowhead stays or goes. I find it interesting that the attorney who just spoke says she represents both the company, who is a tenant on that property and not a property owner, and the property owner of which I believe there are multiple for that piece of property, not just a single property owner. So I'm not sure who she's representing, but when we look at this piece of property in relation to our city, this is, as the general plan stated, an opportunity. There were two opportunity properties. The other one is right next to us and we rezoned that. We were going to rezone this. The council who just spoke came before you and said she didn't want it non-conforming because it would stop Arrowhead. Arrowhead had an opportunity to build a new building or obtain new building and they built it in Cypress. Their new facility is in Cypress, not on that property, although they could have extended their new building onto that property, they chose not to. So clearly, Arrowhead doesn't want to extend that property because if they did, they wouldn't be in Cypress. They would have done it there on the property that they already have access to, right next to their facility. So I think that's an ingenuous comment that we're going to be stopping them because they're in Cypress now. They made a decision to put their new facility in Cypress. Yes, the tenant is a major employer. The tenant has been here a long time. No one is trying to get the tenant to leave. There have been non-conforming properties that have had changes done to them. Generally, this body wants to help businesses and will help them. So if Arrowhead came before you and said, well, we have an opportunity and we have a business up and we want to extend our current facility, I don't see this council, this, this body saying, oh, no, you can't do that. Yes, you're non-conforming and yes, we'll let you, we want you to stay here, we'll let you do additional things onto the property. You're there, you're the tenant, you've been there a long time. It won't be a problem. What the concern is, is what they just did to us, the bait and switch. Well, we want Arrowhead to have the capability of doing this. By the way, we're putting a trucking terminal for a totally different company in the back half. Which is not what we in a community want, is additional trucking or additional development of that property as industrial. If Arrowhead wants to expand on it, it shouldn't be a problem, but we don't want additional industrial development back there. What would really be nice is when Arrowhead decides to move the rest of their facility to Cypress and they are no longer a tenant, that the owner of that property can get more per square foot selling that property as retail than they'll ever get as industrial. And it would help our city, it would increase our tax base, it would make the city have a viable commercial area, a downtown, if you will, on the largest single piece of property remaining in the city. Please, do what you did next door. Rezone the property and let's create an opportunity for Los Alamos's future. Not an opportunity for more industrial, which we have no need for in this community. Thank you very much for giving me your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come out? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Who wants to start?
I'd just like to address a legal point. Under the legal, under, yeah, the non-conforming ordinance that the city council just adopted, expansions of non-conforming uses are no longer allowed. That was changed from the previous.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions for clarification. So if the, sorry, if the zone were to be changed, the attorney mentioned that it would be a non-conforming use at that point, but does it not just stay current to what they already have or does it instantly change over at that point?
It makes them a legal non-conforming use, but does prevent.
Expansion.
Expansion and it prevents them from getting financing in all likelihood on future things they may want because banks don't like to loan on non-conforming uses. We're very often called upon in the various cities to write letters confirming whether or not it's allowed or non-conforming use.
Thank you.
How long currently is the lease for Arrowhead? Do you know how long?
You know, I, I don't have that. Susan, can you come up and, thank you.
Offhand, I, I don't have that information, but I'll be happy to contact the plant manager and to find that information out for the commission.
And when did they open the new one in Cypress?
I do not, I don't know. But the other thing I was gonna say is, Arrowhead has a number of, of different operations in terms of the various parts that they manufacture. And so a lot of their decisions as to whether or not they can, why they went over to the Cypress facility is not necessarily, you know, the decision as to why they would leave Los Alamos or go to Cypress. It also has to do with operationally, what types of parts they are manufacturing, whether it would have made sense to manufacture those parts on the same facility as, as they have here in Los Alamos versus having a new facility for those, the types of manufacturing work that they were doing, the types of contracts that they were receiving.
Okay.
Well, I guess this is kind of like deja vu all over again. So in essence, what we're doing, I guess, is, is turning the clock back to when we were discussing this a year or so ago, as to what to do with the property. Okay, with, you know, and our, and our original, the original thought was to designated a, a CG property, retail, basically retail use, as we did with the, as we did with the, the other book-in for the city. And, and all the way through, we had the attorney present at all the meetings and, and stressing the importance that the, that the property be kept as, as it was because of a, of the need to keep it, or the need to not allow it to become non-conform, right? Correct, right? Okay. And so we have language in the staff report, which I don't like. It talks about as a compromise, the planning commission, you know, it's kind of like we, we did a deal. I don't think we did a deal, okay? We didn't reach a compromise. We, we discussed among ourselves and considered the retail overlay and we considered the, you know, its effects, that it would allow the underlying industrial use to remain. We all knew that. I mean, I don't think, is anybody up here who didn't understand that? I mean, I don't think, is anybody up here who didn't understand that? And apparently, that understanding wasn't either, the council didn't understand that, okay? And so they're sending it back to us. I guess they, if I'm reading this correctly, the council did not understand that any new uses going in there could be industrial, that all the retail overlay did was give another tool to go into the box, as it were, for the landowner. They could have an alternative. They could do a retail, or they could do an industrial, okay? We knew that, okay? But there was one more condition in there that we talked about, okay? One more that we, I think, exhausted quite a bit. And that was, okay, we do that, but we need to take a look at our uses in our industrial zone in order to eliminate those uses that we could find objectionable. The heavier, dirtier uses, the warehouse, the distribution, the metal plating. Remember all of that discussion? Madam Attorney, if you'd like to come up, that'll be a question for you. Just want to get, I want to make sure we're all on the same page as we go down this path. Do you recall those discussions?
The discussions that you had.
The comments being made about the need to go through and revisit, that we need to look at our zoning to eliminate the dirtier, grittier uses like the metal plating, those uses that were permitted by right in the industrial zones in the city?
I don't recall that, but I do know that the planning commission just a few months ago did go through.
You don't recall that? It's in the minutes of the meeting from before you were at.
I did, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to believe you, I'm not going to believe you there.
I didn't refresh my memory on that one, but as I said, I do know that the planning commission recently undertook that exercise.
Yes, yeah. And that was, that was a continuation of what probably should have happened earlier but didn't. And so, so I think that, that, so when we, if we're kind of revisiting this whole issue, I think that's, that was a major concern at the time. And that was, not only do we need to have, we would like a retail use, but it also, by changing that use, it, it precludes the industrial uses going into the property. And, and then we finally decided on the overlay. That was presented by staff or presented by, I don't know, was presented by the attorney. But nonetheless, we adopted the overlay. And at least to my recollection, and it is reflected in the minutes, that at some point we need to revisit the uses, we need to look at the zoning, and we need to eliminate uses, you know, before anything could go in there. And I distinctly say that because who knows? We could approve this, and then tomorrow, we could have a project in here that we didn't like, that would have one of these uses in there. And, you know, that happened, okay? So we did it. So now we're back, we're back to square one. And I'm, we have a request by the council, and I, as far as I'm concerned, we're revisiting the issue. We have a little more information. And so I have no problem in, in changing the zone. That's in a nutshell, and, and changing it to retail. That's my comment.
Anything? Victor?
I think it'd be appropriate to add, I think it'd be appropriate to add to Mr. DeBolt's record, the fact that the commission did go forward on a couple meetings and review the uses in the particular zones, and after much discussion and deliberation, chose ones that we felt were no longer appropriate. Those uses went to counsel, and they decided to receive and file those and took no action. So I think just to complete Art's record, that needs to be included.
No matter how we look at it, we're not going to have somebody happy. Someone's going to be happy, someone's going to be unhappy, no matter what we do with this property. I think that it sends a negative message if we take and try to zone it where it makes it impossible for them to work. They have been a good neighbor. They have been here a long time. I think they're going to be here a while. I really don't think they're going anywhere. Expanding to Cypress, I mean, Cypress lost two businesses because they couldn't expand. So, and that one was Bendy, and they're losing Bands, I believe, as well, who's leaving because they can't get the expansion of the area that they need. It would have been nice if they would have expanded to the back of their property, but I don't know what they do. I don't know if what they were doing was better to move it to another area. The stuff that we went through in the past to look at this was to how to make this that if in the event that Arrowhead left, we had our voice that we would like it to go retail. It was not about trying to rezone it and put it as a commercial or anything else. It was trying to keep it in the way they were so that if they needed to go get financial loans or whatever they were doing, wouldn't tie their hands up and make it impossible for them to do anything. It would allow them to continue to function as a business, but if at any time Arrowhead decided, "Okay, well, we're going to leave," it would allow us to then invoke the right to have retail there. And I think that was the valid point of what we came up with on our compromise, and I still stand by that. I think that that is a good way to move forward, that having it where we're a good neighbor with our businesses, because we have businesses that want to come here, but if we're going to tie up other businesses, they might think twice about wanting to move into our town. If we all of a sudden decide we're going to rezone you to what we really want here and we didn't like you being here, we decided we want houses, we can't just do that that easily. We do have to be a good neighbor. I'm not in favor of rezoning this to any kind of hardship on them. They have been a good neighbor. I'd like to keep them as a good neighbor. I think keeping the zoning such that it allows them to continue to function, but if they ever decide and go away, then we have a, we have what we want there for retail. Whether we want to put something that anything develop further on the property has to come before us, I, that's fine. But as far as changing them or tying their hands up is something I don't wish to do.
And Wendy, I agree, that was absolutely our intention, but from what I read, that's not what our intention is, not what happens with the retail overlay, that if they go out, it's not going to become retail. It's an option, another industrial person can go right in, right?
Yep.
So I think what we intended, at least what I thought was going to happen, is not how it ended up working out. Because we wanted it, like, we want to be a good neighbor with Arrowhead, and as long as they're here, it's great, but if they leave, we want it to be retail. But that's not what we put in place. That's not what's going to happen now.
So how do we put that in place?
Blank stare.
You just looked at me.
Because the zoning goes to the use. I mean, zoning's for industrial. So it is somewhat of a difficult task, and without making it a nonconforming use, I could think of a way that you could allow expansion on the Arrowhead site. You could, we could do an ordinance amendment to the nonconforming that was just adopted that said, notwithstanding whatever the section numbers were there, this property has a right. You know, this use could expand. It's larger than most properties. It's not like a CrossFit in a building expanding. This is somewhat of a unique circumstance. That's why it was identified as an opportunity site. So I think we could develop findings that would get around, that would justify getting around a spot zoning argument or a, that type of problem. But you still have the problem that Arrowhead doesn't want to be considered a nonconforming use. And I can't solve that and say when Arrowhead goes out, then it has to go retail.
Can I maybe comment and maybe correct what you just said, that Arrowhead doesn't want to be a nonconforming use? I think it would be more appropriate to say that the landowner, was that JB, whatever, doesn't want it to be a nonconforming use.
No, I think I heard that the business itself doesn't want to become nonconforming.
Well, probably, but I'm sure the owner also, because I mean.
Okay, both don't want it.
Because the owner could sever their, their tenancy agreement with Arrowhead. So, I mean, we're focusing on Arrowhead, but there's a bigger, there's a bigger entity here, and that's.
Okay, I'm not sure exactly what the legal relationship is between the owner and Arrowhead in the event if there's a tie between them or not. But right now, I think the commission's focused on Arrowhead at the general plan and zoning level because Arrowhead is the tax revenue to the city. Arrowhead is the employer. But yes, I'm sure probably that the property owner wouldn't like Arrowhead to have to leave if they have a lucrative lease, but that's a private concern.
But, but again, and the comment was made, Arrowhead doesn't have to leave. They could continue operating. They just can't expand, and they can't, I mean, they could still be there as a nonconforming use.
They could expand as legal nonconforming, though, right?
No, they can.
Because of the change, they can't.
We changed the ordinance right now, that there's no expansion of nonconforming uses.
Right. So what, if I may, so what you just said about adopting some type of a, a ordinance that would, on this particular property, allow for the expansion, correct? The, with the, notwithstanding the, the nonconforming, you know, our, our changes. You just said that you could, we could, in essence, accommodate them.
To expand
Their existing use.
It leaves them with the back half of the property basically undevelopable.
Well, it would affect, look, okay, let's, let's separate, okay? Now, now we're talking landowner. Let's talk, let's talk, if we're talking Arrowhead. Let's keep, let's keep, I'm sure we're on this, we're mixing this stuff up. Okay, if we, if we change the zone, then the, the zone is changed on the raw land, okay? As far as the use is concerned, which is Arrowhead, okay, then their use becomes a nonconforming use.
Correct.
And is incapable of being expanded.
Correct.
Okay, which would assume, if they're going to expand, would be on the property, okay, right? So on the land portion of the property. And so if you can craft, or if we can come up with a, an accommodation that allows for the expansion, even though we have our ordinance, okay? If that, we legally can do that so that we, we satisfy that concern that Commissioner Gross has voiced, the same concern that the attorney has voiced, stood up here and said they can't expand, they can't, you know, they want to do that, then to me, that seems to be the win-win in this, okay? Because they're allowed to, they're, they can expand their use. That was the objection. They, and, and the zone can be changed, okay, to a retail zone, and Arrowhead is, is safe. They have 28 acres there. They can expand to the full, the full extent that they need to expand. And if they wanted to expand, they probably would have to move on, I would imagine, because they're going to have parking and all that stuff to deal with. So, so they have the acreage to expand their use, and we've accommodated them, and yet we get our, we have the long-term of the retail zone, and should then they ever decide to leave, they would still be able to sell it to another like firm who could step in even though they're nonconforming, correct?
I just had that pulled up.
So we're not, yeah, yeah, they can, they can come into a, as long, as long as it's a, a similar firm of the same.
I think if it's not any more intense, we said that could do.
Well, I mean, if they're going out and they're going to let another company come in, if it's, if it's an aerospace company that's doing similar work and all of that, they, they should fall within the scope of the, for sure, it would be then probably with the CUP. So I'm sure that, all that can be discussed with time.
We put in, no structural alterations are made. Nonconforming use of a structure can be changed to a different type of nonconforming use upon approval of the CUP.
Right. So if they, so if they come in with the same type of use.
No. You said different type?
No, same.
It has to be same type.
Change, no, change to a different type of nonconforming use upon approval of a CUP.
Oh.
Oh, all right. So, so basically, they can continue along the same lines, and they could expand, which has been, seems to be the hang-up, okay? And I think that's, that's a nice thought.
Thank you, Art.
A nice solution.
And just to clarify, I mean, it's important that we know that we're talking about the use, not the property itself. The expansion would be for the use only.
Yes.
Not any other type of expansion.
No, no, they could, yeah, no. The, it would be, any new would have to be retail, but Arrowhead expanding
Arrowhead expansion only.
Would, would be, would be permitted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's a legal solution. I don't know what practicality, if that has problems for Arrowhead or not.
Who has problems?
The council, yeah.
Well, I can tell you that. I would say that would be the, that would be, that to me would be the solution that we would, I think, recommend because it seems to address the concerns that are, that have been raised. And, and they want to stay, we want them to stay. I mean, it's all kind of a give and a take, I think, and.
Did you want to answer, Art? Susan? I don't know if that was a question for her.
I don't have a question.
Kind of.
Well, a comment, call.
Comment.
Response.
I'm not really sure if I understand exactly what the, the solution that, that Art was articulating.
The solutions, I think what I stated, that on this piece of property with the zoning, Arrowhead would be allowed to expand its nonconform, expand the nonconforming use, notwithstanding the provisions of the recently adopted nonconforming use ordinance.
So they would be able to then, say, build, a building with that?
With a CUP, yeah, for, for Arrowhead's uses.
For the CUP. But they would still be considered nonconforming? It's just that this particular nonconforming use would be able to be expanded?
Yes.
But I think.
If approved by CUP.
Right. No, I, I think that that, that certainly addresses the concern that they had about expansion. I think that the issue as to how a construction lender, for example, would look at that as being a nonconforming use that Lisa had, had raised is something I would probably want to talk to Arrowhead about.
And of course, now, unlike your, the previous ordinance, when you were looking at a nonconforming use at the general plan stage, we no longer have an amortization provision in our ordinance. So that's gone. That, that issue has been removed. It was 30 years, 50 years, 10 years, whatever it was. Our ordinance now does provide forever.
Yeah, understood. That's probably something I would want to talk to both the landowner and, and Arrowhead about, and I am representing both of them. Obviously, the landowner is interested in keeping Arrowhead on that property and making sure that its operations, you know, are allowed to continue. So I, that's probably something I'm, I'm, I can't answer right now, and I would need to, to talk to them about that.
But in essence, in essence, if I'm hearing our attorney correctly, then without an amortization period, which was eliminated, then you're there as long as you want to be there.
That, that's correct.
That's it. You're there as long as you want to be there, and you can expand as long as you remain.
Get a conditional use permit.
And come in for the conditional use permit and and.
For Arrowhead use.
For Arrowhead, for Arrowhead.
For Arrowhead use.
Yeah, for your use, for that, for Arrowhead. Yeah, for your use, for that, for Arrowhead, so I
Well, there's always going to be legal non-conforming. If they want to expand, they'd need a CUP to expand the legal non-conforming use. And they'd still be a legal non-conforming use, just a bigger legal non-conforming.
And I think, and I think that that's the consideration that I would want to talk to the landowner about, just in terms of if they were to go after financing to, to say, obviously, finance the, an expansion, how that would be impacted. I need to, I need to understand that, and I don't, I don't have that information.
Do you know, as far as if they were to go to a bank to get a loan to do something, if that would also be impacted or not?
I would have to rely on what the landowner told us.
Okay, so we can have that all discussed at our next meeting?
Yeah, that's not something we
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, all we can do is what we can do for us. They have to
So we should, we should, we should entertain a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
No.
That's what I'm hearing, that Susan is requesting. And so the commission has full information as to what
I'm in favor of continuing.
A motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Here we go again.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of continuing to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So that's five ayes.
Yes.
One no.
Okay, we'll continue this to the next meeting.
All right, and if they're
But will they be able to get that information?
In a month? Commissioner Gross, I know he asked some questions, so I was going to just say, I'll try and have all the, have answers to the questions that you asked as well for the next meeting, and I will talk to the client about what we discussed tonight. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll adjourn, oh, okay. We're going, okay. We don't have any items from the community development director or
It's not convenient time.
And the high-tech world is spoiled by AAA batteries. We have to go through items from Steve and
Okay, do we have any items from the community development?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I wanted to let the commission know there'll be an open house held on June 6th between 6:00 and 8:00 PM at the Los Alamos Community Center for the public to come view the designs for the new raised center medians along Los Alamos Boulevard between Cotella and Ceritos. You can drop in anytime during that two-hour period. You don't have to be out there at the beginning or the end.
Six to eight?
Six to eight.
Okay.
On June?
Six, right?
June 6th. It's a Monday. Yeah.
Can you send a reminder email?
Sure.
Okay, any commissioner reports?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I would like to make sure that when we have open houses, that they all do just like Trend did. What an amazing open house that they did for their new printer. I wish I could have stayed longer to go through that whole tour. It was really nice. They did an outstanding job. I didn't get to win the Indian. I would have liked to have. That's a motorcycle, by the way. But they did a really good job. I wish everybody would do what they did to really do a little fanfare on the new thing. It was great.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. And we just, I think, we needed a couple minutes to switch over
Okay.
for the next meeting.